Let's get going. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session. We've got one item on our agenda this morning for November 15th, and it's a Principal Park Master Plan. I'm not sure who's going to kick it off, but let's get going.
Good morning. I hope everyone had a great weekend. Honorable Mayor, County, and Council, I'm Jenny Richmond, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. I am joined today by our Director, Ben Page, Ann Sylvia Ekmanson, our City Architect, and our consultant team led by the DLR Group to present the Principal Park Master Plan. I'd also like to thank the Iowa Cubs leadership for being here today in support of the work. Thank you, Sam and Randy. Appreciate it very much. This morning's presentation is a culmination of the roughly six-month-long master planning efforts that encompass a long-term vision for the entirety of Principal Park, both the stadium itself and the full park site. You may recall in May earlier this year approving consultant services for this project. We received five proposals, and a well-rounded committee of city staff selected the DLR Group. Their team includes professionals with expertise in ballpark and architectural design, interior design, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering, structural and civil engineering, landscape architecture and planning services, cost estimating and scheduling, relevant technology and sustainable services. Now, the DLR Group will give a brief overview of the full master plan, then focus on the proposed approach to Phase One implementation. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave Silverella.
Thanks, Jenny. Dave Silverella, Architect with DLR Group. I think we can just jump right in here. The reason we've started the master plan in the first place was Major League Baseball took a new ownership stake, ownership oversight in minor league baseball in the past year, and implemented new facility standards which will be implemented over the next few years for the ballpark. All minor leagues teams are going through this process of meeting the facility standards, so the city decided it was time to take advantage of that opportunity to look at the entire complex as a whole. You know, Principal Park is one of the oldest minor league stadiums in the country, so it's, you know, just aging infrastructure, and then additional opportunities to really create enhanced features for the ballpark that could be, you know, further realized as an asset for the city of Des Moines. We're going to, here's a quick agenda for what I'm going to walk through here. We'll look at the overarching vision and goals, the overall master plan, and then, like Jenny said, we'll focus in a little bit on the first phase of the master plan and how that would relate to the clubhouse renovation to get most of the facility standard points taken care of. The vision statement really focuses on extending the life of the ballpark for the next 30 to 50 years as an asset for the city of Des Moines, as well as complying with those facility standards, looking at the infrastructure that's in place around the ballpark, what needs to be updated, what systems have kind of passed their useful life and need to be replaced, as well as looking at the community. What do people want out of Principal Park that maybe they're not getting right now? What events could take place there that, you know, is it races or concerts or things like that that are beyond baseball? We did a community survey that we had a great response for. We got over 2,000 responses to the survey thanks to, you know, the city and the club kind of pushing it out on social media and things like that. Really great response as to what amenities might be able to be added to the ballpark. So all of that was kind of taken into account as part of the master plan. And then always when we look at these types of projects, overlaying the, looking at things through with a lens of sustainability in mind, trying to be progressive and proactive in, you know, using resources efficiently both now and down the line. So building off of that vision statement, some of the goals we established, again, facility standard compliance is the first one, and that's the main reason for doing the exercise. You know, there's a scoring system that's in place. Major League Baseball has implemented, looking at those scores and how they need to be implemented over the next few years. First compliance needs to be achieved by April of 2023, so in about 15 months, 16 months. So that's coming soon, and then ultimate compliance is in April of 2025. So over the next few years, you can kind of stair-step into what's needed there. Additionally, taking a pretty deep dive into the facility infrastructure, we did an onsite walkthrough with all of our engineers, looking at all systems, mechanical, electrical, the site, all of the existing, you know, facility infrastructure and what's aged out, what needs to be replaced. So that was kind of the second supporting goal. How are we trying to extend the useful life of the facility? Again, user experience, how do we enhance those amenities? And then really creating the ballpark as an extension of downtown, interlaced with the trail system and the water trails projects that are going on. All of the different interactions that the ballpark has with the city are critical, and we're, you know, working as with Parks and Rec and everyone involved to make sure all of those relationships are utilized to their maximum potential. I mentioned sustainability. This was an important part of what we're doing, both with the facility assessed, or facility infrastructure and any new improvements, is looking at things with a sustainable vision. You can see on the right the main points that we try to hit, and when we look at some of the improvements, those little icons are assigned to opportunities where those would be able to be implemented. This is an overall site plan with each of the master plan experience and opportunities identified. You can see as far as the, you know, the land that we're dealing with here, we're really touching the entire facility or the entire complex. There's no one area that we've really focused our energy. I can hit some of the highlights here. Z is the clubhouse renovation that we'll talk about in a little bit, but on the northwest corner, focusing on creating a new public entry that's highly visible from downtown and with the major approaches to the ballpark. There are playground and recreation enhancements to the southwest where we'd have a little turf field and potential for a large video board to broadcast games or community movies, some seating that might overlook the river. At the Confluence, also creating another kind of passive park concept with some public art. Again, large lawn space where pre-game events, picnics, concerts, those types, small concerts, those types of events could happen. The other one I want to mention specifically is the letters D, E, and F here are not on the Principal Park property, but it's been identified as an economic development opportunity for the city. It's a private owner, but if we could, you know, envision that as future parking with some retail and restaurant and maybe bar component to it, to really further, you know, invigorate and create some excitement in that area, especially with the creation of a new public entry, there's a lot of synergy that can be created with that piece of land beyond just functioning as a parking lot. Like I said, we look at the, go ahead.
I have a question about the parking piece there. You have it in that location, which I think would be a great addition. I mean, you also have the surface lot on the other side as well that could be similarly developed, right? I mean, why wasn't that spot sort of identified for a similar concept? I mean, you have, because that's right on the river in some respects, almost a more desirable spot for that type of development.
It's a good question. You know, the lot here is, you know, utilized currently for staff and player parking, which is part of the plan, and we're going to move some player parking around and things like that. I don't, it certainly could be if the city was willing to, you know, there's nothing necessarily magic about that spot that it couldn't be on city property versus private development. I think trying to keep overall cost in mind for the recommendations of the master plan.
So we own that lot there?
You didn't, you own, sorry, this mouse is kind of funky. This lot, every, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. There's levy that follows the southeast side of the bridge.
Oh, and the levy, of course.
There's the wall there, and this is all levy. So developing the floodplain would be a problem.
So that's what it is?
That's why we don't plan for development or structures and more additional large structures. We can do modifications to the stadium, but we would not be able to do a full development on that parking lot.
Okay, because that's within the levy.
Yep, yep.
Sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
Forgot the forest for the trees on that one.
Pam? And it wouldn't matter what type of materials we use, like if we used more resilient?
It's putting something in the floodway is the problem.
Okay.
Just obstructions in the floodway, so then we have to offset it and mitigate it somewhere else.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
It's all about flood volume. I totally forgot, didn't forget, but, yeah.
That's a large one with sidewalk.
No. So, good question, though.
So, remember in 1992?
Yes, absolutely. And then as we looked at the holistic vision for the master plan, you know, we want to look at how does this get implemented in phases over time? You know, we've identified five phases as well as that potential economic development opportunity. We've kind of kept that separate because it's not something the city can necessarily stop their money or got something they can control. And then what we want to focus on today is Phase One, which includes, like I said, the bulk of the facility standards compliance components, which really is the renovation to the clubhouse in left field, creation of a new batter's eye in beyond the centerfield wall, and replacement of the outfield wall, which is pretty dilapidated and in need of dire replacement. So we'll look at that in a little bit more detail. I spoke on this a little bit, just the major league standards for MILB facilities. Again, Principal Park was open in 1991. The last time facility standards were updated was in 1990. So it was in compliance, but the standards have changed the scope and breadth of what teams try to accomplish in minor league baseball has changed a lot, and the new facility standards try to address some of those trends. Everything is focused on team operations, day-to-day activities. Nothing in the standards are really fan-related or, you know, it's not concessions or, you know, nothing fan-facing. It's all team operations-type things. And then, like I said, initial compliance required by 2023, ultimate compliance in 2025. The current agreement that the Iowa Cubs are under expires in 2030, so the question sometimes comes up, well, what's stopped, if we make some of these improvements, what's stopping Major League Baseball from upping the standards or revising the standards? It's not anticipated that those would be redone ahead of 2030. Never say never, but with the current agreement, that's one of our understanding. And everything's looked at through a scoring system, again, developed by Major League Baseball, and they'll use those scores and compliance to affect, you know, affiliation with clubs, level, contraction, a lot of those things that they're constantly looking at and looking at more and more these days. First off, the existing clubhouse facility. This is the way it's laid out currently. There's been a couple expansions to the facility over the years. The locker rooms were expanded here, and then just a year or two ago, another batting tunnel entered, added. But just from an operational standpoint, beyond just the facility standards compliance, some of the efficiencies and circulation pieces, you know, trying to achieve separation of home and visitors, it's just not necessarily an optimal layout. So beyond meeting the facility standards, also just trying to take that opportunity to enhance the way things kind of fit and flow within the facility. So the concept you can see here is, everything in blue is essentially a gut renovation. We leave any load-bearing walls and things like that, but reorganizing the spaces to get more separation of home and visitors, meeting those facility standards minimums. The orange portion you see is a small addition that would be required. You know, a lot of the facility standards are really based on square footage, minimum square footage requirements, so for all of those spaces to fit and the existing footprint wasn't necessarily feasible, so.
Did we just add, did we just add just the one batting zone as we're looking at it?
That's correct. Yes. So you can see in, you know, the green spaces are, you know, kind of utilizing the existing home locker room to become visitor, so that's more of your visitor suite on the left, home suite on the right, and then some of the umpire and female staff pieces interspersed as well. And then I mentioned a little bit about the secure player parking that exists right now in the lot just to the north, currently that technically is in compliance because it's remedied with an operational issue. They can, if you don't have secure perimeter, secure fence for parking, you have to have staff that monitors and ushers players in and out of parking before and after games. So while it is technically in compliance, not necessarily an ideal solution. So one thing we've identified is relocating some player parking beyond the outfield wall. Currently not accosted with Phase One, but something that would be our very first priority, if possible, to also include with Phase One would be that player parking relocation, just to help with the operations of that.
Could you call that one, that slide? I just, yeah, I don't know what this is. There's home lockers, toilet area, shower. What's grooming?
So just outside the showers, it'd be your sinks, your drying areas, you know, places to leave your towel and toiletries, things like that, so. And then, so I mentioned player parking, and then we talked a little bit about the batter's eye. If you're not familiar with what a batter's eye is, you know, just beyond the centerfield wall, it's an opaque dark surface that's required to allow the batter, it's a safety measure for batters to be able to pick up the ball as it's being pitched. Currently, the batter's eye doesn't meet the height and width requirements set out by the new facility standards, so we would need to make that larger. In most cases, that's not a huge talking point here with the view of the Capitol being a prime asset of the ballpark and something people really enjoy and are sensitive to. We took a little deeper dive into, okay, if we have to make this batter's eye bigger, what does that mean? So we looked at it, and this is starting in the first row. You can see in red where the expansion of the batter's eye would be. So who's being impacted by this, the view of the Capitol, view to the Capitol with the batter's eye expansion? So from row one, you can see a good amount of the Capitol. You can still see the dome and kind of the right side, and again, this is directly behind home plate, so keep in mind as you go left and right, the view changes as well. You go up just a few rows. This is row three, you can see in the top left. That view is enhanced a little bit more, but you don't have to go too far up. This is row 12, and you really start to see that the Capitol, the view of the Capitol is not as obstructed. And then by the time you get to the mid-cross aisle in row 28, basically the entire view is maintained. So we were concerned about that when we started the project and have done this analysis, so you can see it's a, while it is your best seats and your maybe highest-paying customers that are affected, it certainly is not the entire ballpark. And again, as you move left or right in the concourse, that view also is maintained for a large part. So any questions on that?
So you'd redo that with the whole outfield wall at one time?
Yes and no. Right now, the batter's eye is planned to be beyond the outfield wall.
Oh, it is. It's not part of the outfield wall?
It's not part of the outfield wall as we've got it planned. So while we do recommend replacing the outfield wall, it's not the same structure. So, and this is just an overview of a lot of what I just talked about. You know, really the main goals here are facility standards compliance and then any infrastructure that we're replacing as part of that, you know, really looking at whole building systems, some of the HVAC units, the electrical, you know, replacing lighting with new LED, you know, trying to get more outside air. You can see with the HVAC unit replacements, you know, maybe it's not a one-for-one replacement of those systems, but just embracing new technology and things like that. I don't know that I need to read through all of this. I think we've covered most of this as we've discussed. Any specific questions regarding, specifically the infrastructure? You know, a lot of the finishes are worn and dated. Doors, frames need to be replaced. A lot of the plumbing fixtures are just, A, in need of replacement, and B, with that renovation, almost all of the plumbing fixtures are being relocated anyway, so we're, you know, tearing out the floor and relocating some of those systems.
So these are like plumbing upgrades only in the area of, I guess it'd be the, um...
Just in the lower?
Left field, center, not in the, the area where the visitors, not the visitors, but where the fans would be using the rest of them.
So this is, again, just isolated, what we're talking about Phase One, just isolated to the clubhouse.
In those areas. Gotcha. Okay.
It is not the remainder of the stadium. We've identified those issues as part of the assessment, and where necessary, those, that work is taking place as part of later phases.
Okay.
But not Phase One.
So like there, if there are concrete repairs in the, for the structure elsewhere, not in this phase?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
I mean, there are, there is some, you know, masonry work here. You can see the first line there, but it's minimal compared to some other parts of the stadium.
Okay.
So obviously, everyone's prime question, okay, what is this going to cost? We've done a detailed cost estimate for each of the phases. This is the Phase One summary. You can see each of the major components broken out here. Clubhouse renovation, I guess, first of all, it's broken up into different color codes for the different components as part of the vision and goals. So facility standards compliance, anything that relates to that is shown in blue. Anything in green is more of the user experience upgrades that we've identified as other parts of the master plan. Again, none of that really applies to this phase. And then in the orange color, facility infrastructure, so those are the systems that we're replacing and trying to extend the life of the facility. So clubhouse renovation, construction cost at a little over $4 million, batter's eye $150,000, and then the facility infrastructure at a little over $1 million. And it's interesting, the facility infrastructure upgrades and the clubhouse renovation, you know, there's a lot of parts and pieces that we've had to extract so they would exist in the cost in one spot or another. We've tried to segregate them so there's not doubling up of those costs because with the renovation, you're redoing a lot of those systems regardless. With the infrastructure upgrades, those were identified without consideration initially with any other renovation that would happen, so it's really trying to get into the details of what needs to be done to extend the life of the facility versus what needs to be done to meet the facility standards compliance. So, but that, so there's a lot of gray area there where those overlap. Any questions regarding?
So question, and this might be for Scott or for someone. So when we did, a lot of us remember Sec Taylor Stadium. Now it's Principal Park. So in the 90s, when we did all of the upgrades, was that a private-public partnership? Was it all on city? Was it the county, you know, the contiguous cities? You know, this is a, this isn't just a Des Moines attraction. This is used, obviously, for the entire state, but, you know, the contiguous cities that use this as an amenity, I just wondered how it was paid for when we did the substantial upgrade to the entire stadium?
And I may need a little help here, but I do know that it was a metro-wide area investment that had the suburbs also investing in that major renovation. As far as the private funds, I would have assumed there would have been private funds in there as well, so yes, it would have been a combination.
So are we looking at this type of upgrade, like the full upgrade that we've given to us, at looking at funding that through similar ways, or are we looking at strictly as a city project?
So we can look at it as a metro-wide project and ask for some participation. I think we need to be a little further along in understanding what the rest of the improvements in the future phases are, because I would not want to go with an incomplete answer to them and have to go right back again within the year or two. So I think we'll have to digest that this is the minimum project that we need to take care of.
Okay.
And as you might imagine, there's a larger price tag that would be for the entire site redevelopment for more of the fan-based, and that's going to be an easier element to talk to the suburbs and other government entities.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. I'm not necessarily just looking at this project, but group it all together. As we did the tunnel, it would have been nice to do the addition at that time. Probably would have been a lot cheaper if we'd have did the weight room in the tunnel and all of it together, but, you know, obviously, we didn't know that that was coming. But, I mean, I would be interested in, like, the full package, the whole thing, and get a lot of our community partners to participate in this.
Sure. So who's going to be the owner, the contractor of this? Is this Parks that's going to run this thing?
Facilities.
Okay, so when I look down at the bottom here and I see profit of 20%, which is about double what we used to see of 10 allowed, is that the city that's going to profit here? Or who's, who gets that?
So that number, the general conditions, bonds, fees, overhead, and profit, that's a contract number, contractor number that's applied to the construction cost. It's not profit for, it includes, it's not 20% profit for the contractor. It's 20% of all of those items that's estimated at 20% above raw construction cost for each of those items.
That would still be defined as profit, I think?
No, there's financing fees in there.
Not all profit, no.
There'd be quite a few items within that line item that would add up to 20%.
General conditions are, you know, contractors, staff on site, the bonds that they put forth, any... put forth, any, you know, the fees that are required for construction, the permitting, things like that. Well, permits are really carried in the project's soft costs mostly, but I think 20% is a pretty common number for that, kind of above and beyond the raw construction cost to be applied for the contractor's work to be...
We charge ourselves for permitting?
Yes, there is, yes.
So you can see there's the 20% under each of these that's applied to the construction to get to the construction cost. And then you've got another 25% estimated above that's allocated as project soft costs. So it's project cost. It's understanding the difference between construction cost and project cost. There's, we've estimated that at 25%, which is fairly typical for, again, design fees, permits, furnitures, fixtures, equipment, a lot of the miscellaneous things, printing, reimbursables. There's a lot of stuff that can fall under that project soft cost that gets applied as well. And that's how we arrive at the roughly $6.5 million number.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Well, in the Phase One, is everything, that's going to cover all of the MLB standards? Or are there pieces in Phase Two or Phase Three that we need to...
The only one was the player parking.
The player parking.
Costed, it's not part of this cost, but would be recommended. Again, it's in compliance, but...
It, it's in compliance, but less than ideal because we do it with the staffing as opposed to a secure parking.
Exactly. But beyond that, none of the subsequent phases have any player or facility standards compliance components to...
Okay. So this is what we need to do to make sure we're in line with MLB? And there was an initial compliance by 2023, and what, what's the 2023 versus 2025?
Without going into too much detail, it's, it's all graded on a point system. Every item of noncompliance, you're assigned a number of points for that. So you have to get under a certain point threshold by 2023. The point threshold reduces then by 2024, and then it's ultimate, you know, the lowest number you can be at is 2025. So it's, it's a staged thing to allow, you know, clubs to take on parts of it as needed. With this, since it's such a concentrated area, it only made sense to do it as a single phase as much as possible.
Okay. So we, we essentially need to have the whole thing done by 2023, then?
Yes, well, yes and no. If you're doing it as a single phase, yes. You're not going to piecemeal it in the short term to get to that.
We're, we're not going to be in compliance in 2023 if we don't, because...
If you don't just bite, bite the bullet, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
I think there's a schedule as well.
Yep, absolutely. So, yeah, if there's nothing else on cost, what's the timeline look for this? And I don't, you know, ideally, starting to look at RFP selection for design team. You know, the master plan is its own part of this. Going into actual, you know, construction document will be a separate procurement for the city, estimating design for, you know, starting after the first of the year. And then ultimately, what you're trying to do here is hit, you know, the start of construction right when the season ends because you've got to fit all of this construction in between seasons. So as soon as the last pitch is thrown, you know, someone's in there with a sledgehammer and starting demo, and then you've got this, the bulk of the work done in the offseason. Now, and Ann can probably speak to this a little better, there's consideration for staging this. To your question, Josh, a little bit about can we do this over multiple seasons? Some of the systems components and things like that, I think there's discussion of trying to break some of those pieces over two seasons. What things are part of the entire building that we identified? And this goes back to the facility infrastructure versus clubhouse renovation that I talked about. What can be done to renovate that but could be deferred to the following year? So some of the systems that affect the upper level, you know, the restaurant space, the suites, some of those, you know, spaces up there, maybe that gets pushed off to 2024. Don't know exactly the details of all of the, you know, individual line items that could be pushed off, but just from a cost standpoint, if we don't want to bite it all off in one chunk, there are opportunities to phase that part of the work over two seasons. Again, one of the major, and I didn't talk about this and should have, one of the major concerns with the facility infrastructure was water infiltration. The plaza deck that's above the home and visitor clubhouse has been problematic for a lot of years. So this includes complete replacement of that plaza deck to take care of those water infiltration issues. That's probably the biggest facility infrastructure piece that needs to be remedied among some of the other aging systems. But, so that would be done as part of the first offseason with the major renovation and any pieces that can be staged into the next offseason would be as well.
But everything Phase One, really, you'd like to have completed by the start of the 2023 season, correct?
In a perfect world, yes. You would like to do it all in one offseason just for efficiency. You're not keeping a contractor on for multiple years. I think there was consideration for breaking it up into two seasons just to spread out that cost a little bit for budgeting purposes. But, yes, in a perfect world, you would do it all at once.
Yeah, I think it would cost more if we split it up.
Any other questions? If not, let's move ahead.
Yeah, anything, go ahead.
Is there more about the other parts that are planned in the later seasons that, that we should see that information now, or...
That, we can talk about any of those other phases, of course. You know, today, we wanted to really focus on Phase One and get that in front of you all. But if you've got specific questions as to, you know, how the subsequent phases fall, I can certainly answer those.
So will the seating capacity stay the same?
It's reduced a little bit because one of the items I didn't mention, down the right and left field line, letters X, are pulling bullpens, which are currently on the field, out of the field of play. That's a major player safety concern from, from the Cubs. So I think we were reducing by about 700 seats by pulling those bullpens off the field and kind of encroaching in the seating area there. But other than that, seating capacity, and that's not part of Phase One. Are you asking for the whole thing or just the...
No, no. That was actually, you answered my second question about the bullpens because I know that there aren't many fields that have, have bullpens right on the playing field, so...
But as part of the overall master plan, letters...
Where is the overall master plan? Do we not get a, a peek at, at the whole thing and the costs for all the improvements that, in a perfect world, we'd love to get?
Didn't have that, we, we have it, yes. We didn't have it prepared for today to present.
Okay.
We can certainly do that, I would, I would think.
Yeah, we can bring that back, absolutely. And that is the intent. We wanted to really focus on these first, the required improvements.
We didn't want that to get lost in the bigger...
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the Phase One improvements, as we look, you know, at the schedule, getting that solicitation out to get a design team on board and things like that was the priority. So that's why the focus on Phase One for today, but absolutely.
But Phase One includes the bullpen, though, doesn't it?
No, it does not. No.
It does not?
No.
Wow. Okay.
The bullpens are part of Phase Four, I believe. No, Phase Two, I'm sorry. Phase Two includes the bullpen renovation because it happens a lot with the new main entry on this corner and how people get in and out here. So pulling the bullpen off and then we also do the other bullpen at the same time just as it makes sense.
Okay. But Scott, if you're talking with the other cities in the metro area, you'll, you'll need to talk about those other, what's planned in the long, or not the long run, but the next five years for Principal Park, right?
Yes. But you will hear first what the rest of the plan looks like before those conversations take place.
Okay.
Back to your question a minute ago about seating capacity, too. Letters GHIJ identify opportunities for premium enhancements. You know, you've got suites that are part of the ballpark, both, you know, around behind home plate as well as in left field. But trying, trying to kind of diversify some of those premium opportunities for fans, so creating a club space directly behind home plate. There's a couple large open-air party decks that would be proposed down the right and left field lines, creating some mezzanine or upper concourse level suites. So that would increase seating capacity as well for those premium customers.
So I think either Sam or, or Michael Gartner said that minor league stadiums being built today have a smaller seating capacity than Principal Park, I believe. So it's still, even though you'd lose 700 seats, it's not, here we go. And, and maybe Sam, you can tell us if the Cub Club is going to come back, too.
No, you're fine. Please.
Good morning. The, the current standards in new construction are smaller than what our facility is now. The Omaha Ball Club, which was built, the stadium that was built in, outside of the Omaha area, was built, with that in mind, kind of beginning of that, it's about 7,800 seats. Just about anything new that's built right now, councilman is, is in the 7,500 to 9,000 range, depending on the market and where, whether it's a AAA team or a Class A team, just depends on where it's at. We've had the luxury of being in the 11,000-seat facility range for a long time. We could back off some in lieu of meeting the desires of the Cubs, but for, for the most part, it's, it's, it's more than adequate for us right now.
Okay. And so the only other question I had is, I didn't see that the Cub Club is in here.
The, the building stays intact. There is no Cub Club anymore. I know, I know how important that breakfast is to you, councilman, but we got out of the restaurant business.
Okay.
Between losing, losing on a monthly basis and then the pandemic, it's, it's not going to come back anytime soon. Now, that could change, but right now, we don't have any plans to bring the restaurant back. We're using the space for catering facilities and private parties and things like that. To answer your question, councilman, about the history, there, originally in '91, when the stadium was built, there was a bond issue, there was private money raised, there was the ball club put in about $2 million, I believe, if I remember correctly. And the whole project, including the city's in-kind stuff, the paving, the parking areas, I believe, got to upwards of about $14 million. But it was the bond issue. I believe the bond issue, Scott, was seven and a half to eight million dollars, I think, and it includes some pools and some other park areas as well as the ball club. As far as the facility itself goes, just to give you a little bit of background as to what's happened with Major League Baseball basically taking over Minor League Baseball, they have given us a new direction as to accommodating all of the change in how teams are built. When I started in 1983, I had a manager, I had a pitching coach, and I had a trainer. And currently, this last year's staff, we had a manager, a pitching coach, a pitching evaluator, we had a hitting coach, we had an assistant hitting coach, we have two trainers, we have a weight guy, we have a nutritionist, we have two interns, medical interns. And then we go from what was 23 and 24 players in the locker room with maybe one or two guys on the IL. It's upwards now, the roster is 25. And sometimes we have as many as eight to 10 guys on the IL in the locker room at the same time. And that doesn't include all the rovers that come in and out. There may be as many as six or seven instructors at any given time. And then we have no facility for female activity as far as female locker room, nutritionists, female nutritionists, female trainers. The Cubs even have female coaches involved in the, in the system now, becoming more and more popular as things are coming along. We don't have any facility for that. So that's a big chunk of what, what baseball is, is requiring is, is the added space for the added personnel and the added players, and then the accommodating of the female activity within, within the locker room and all the jobs that, that are beginning to be created for, for women in our sport.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. That was all I had. Any questions? I'll leave this graphic up. I don't need to go to a slide that says questions. This spurs me any further.
I think we're good.
All right.
And Scott, this is going to come back, and it looked like on the schedule that they had here on the screen in February?
For the RFP, yes. That's the schedule.
Okay. All right. Scott, anything else you want to update us on real quick?
No, actually. That was just the one topic for this morning.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the update. Sam, good to see you.
Thanks for your support.
You bet. Well, until this evening, everybody have a good day.